Good evening and welcome to the February 12th, 2025, meeting of the Sandwich School Committee. Members of the public may listen and watch the Sandwich, the school committee meeting via live stream at www.sandwichtv.org and the Sandwich Community TV Education Channel 8. We will start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. We will start with the first public forum of the evening. Does anybody wish to be heard at public forum? I see nobody. We will close the public forum. Next item are donations, and there are a plethora, which is wonderful. The first one is Cloud Nine Frozen Treats to the Sandwich Public School Wellness Committee.
So this is just like Dr. Miller said, and just like last meeting, the first four are all donations for next month's Wellness Fair sponsored by the Wellness Committee. So this is Cloud Nine Frozen Treats LLC. They got the platinum level sponsorship and kind of fun, kind of cute. They donated $509. Get it? $509. So for your consideration.
May I have a motion to accept this donation?
I move that we accept the donation from Cloud Nine Frozen Treats as presented with appreciation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Danielle. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. It is seven zero zero. Thank you. Six, seven. Geez, I don't know.
And the next one is from our friends in the elementary PTA, also platinum level sponsorship of the Wellness Fair for $500.
I move that we, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I move that we accept the donation from the Sandwich Elementary PTA as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Bert. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seven oh, unanimous. You're on a roll.
Next one, also $500 for platinum level sponsorship from Cape Cod Healthcare, again for the Wellness Fair.
I move that we accept the $500 donation from Cape Cod Healthcare with appreciation as presented.
Second by Bert. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seven zero, unanimous.
And then last but not least, also platinum level sponsorship, $500 from our food service provider, the Abbey Group, also for the Wellness Fair.
Do they get records on the wall for this?
I'm sorry?
They get like records on the wall for this?
Actually, in a lot of the swag has their company imprints, logos.
I move that we accept the donation from the Abbey Group for $500 for the Wellness Fair as presented.
Is there a second? Bert again, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. When we do it this way, it's very easy for Lisa to do the minutes, by the way.
It's okay. It makes it clear.
Cut and paste, cut and paste, cut and paste.
And then last but not least, we have a donation of $75 in loving memory of the recently departed Chief of the Sandwich Police, Chief Robert Werly. His estate requested that donation to the Sandwich Athletics Donation Account.
I move that we accept the donation in memory of Chief Robert Werdy as presented.
Oh, wow.
He was, Bob Werdy was also had the foresight to create the first school resource officer, which was the first one on the Cape, so. I knew him well. Yeah. He had, he was, Bob was a good guy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, and with great appreciation to all of the donors for those donations. Next, we will review and act on the meeting minutes of the regular meeting of January 29th, 2025. May I have a motion?
I move that we accept the, or we approve the minutes as presented for the business meeting of January 29th, 2025.
Second by Bert. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven zero, unanimous. Thank you. Now, correspondence and announcements. I do not have any. Danielle?
I just have one announcement. Nikki Bordelon, our nursing department head, has sent out an email about an event at Four Seas at Cape Cod Community College next week over February vacation. The dental hygiene students in the dental clinic are hosting, offering free dental exams, cleanings, and sealants for kids, anyone ages three to 17. So check your emails from, an email from Nikki Bordelon. It's all free. They get an exam cleaning, fluoride, sealants, and toothbrush instruction. So it's worthwhile. It's great. It's, it's great for the students. It's great for the dental hygiene students as well as the students. So I enjoyed doing it when I was in school years ago.
It was interesting. On the news this morning, they featured Bristol Community College Dental Hygiene Program. Okay, superintendent's update.
Okay, so just a couple quick updates. It's kind of interesting. The MSBA, the Massachusetts School Business, I'm sorry, Building Authority, every 10 years kind of does a comprehensive assessment of the state of affairs of schools. And then it helps kind of inform their process when they put out statements, RFPs for a statement of interest. So yesterday and Monday, there were consultants from a firm called STV Inc. came in and along with Chris George did about two and a half hours in each of our schools, kind of looking at all of, you know, the mechanical systems, HVAC and so on. And we should be receiving a report with kind of like a ranking of how we fall relative to, I think, the number of something like 1,560 schools across the Commonwealth. Chris did say, you know, in kind of talking to the two consultants that came in the district, we were kind of middle of the pack. You know, he said the initial statement was, hey, you know, your schools are in really good shape. And Chris initially was like, really? But I think it gives you perspective relative to what's out there.
Yeah, they really are out there.
In other communities. So I'll keep you apprised. We're probably looking at, you know, November, December before we get anything definitive on that. Second piece is just kind of an announcement, an all call. We already will be starting the Monday that we come back from February vacation on the 24th with both pre-K and K enrollment. Kristin Tino has his big event, Kindergarten Parent Information Night on Wednesday, March 5th. As I say in the background notes, we're going to do things a little bit differently and kind of pre-K and K is kind of like our test ground, but we decided we are going to centralize enrollment through central office. We've just found from school to school, there's sometimes there's some inconsistencies as far as just process, some of the document handling. It's by and large handled completely online through Power School. However, sometimes parents need some gentle nudging as far as uploading of documents or actually completing the process and so on. So we're confident that having kind of a couple central office point people designated to do that work will help standardize our procedures. And that's what I have.
Old business, strategic planning focus groups.
Okay, so I know this came out of our retreat in July, the desire to kind of hear from different constituencies. So as I have in the background notes, we have right now, I believe, nine different groups planned for focus groups, approximately 45 minutes to an hour. Central office staff will be facilitating questions, and you know, you can see the groups that we have. We have the Sandwich Partnership for Families, Parents involved, mostly very young parents of infant to preschool, Forestale families, Oak Ridge families, middle high school families. I still have to firm up something with Mary Kate for CPAC families. We are going to do a session with the Sandwich Chamber of Commerce that I will be facilitating. We're doing two sessions. I'm working with Sue Marsenick to have two sessions at the Cal. And then one session next week with families of students who opted for other educational experiences. And then this Friday, I'm sorry, that should say 214, not 114. If you want to be an early riser, you can connect with me and the Superintendent's Advisory Committee. I'll be doing a protocol with them. So all I ask is if you are interested in being in any, some, all of these, just shoot me an email. As you can see, the majority of these will be done via Zoom. The only ones that will be in person, it's up in the air now whether we will do the partnership one in person. If that one is done in person, chances are it's going to be done in the morning, and it will be done at the Sand Hill School because right now Lauren Galvano does her programming there. The Chamber of Commerce is meeting on the 28th at the Sand Hill School, so that'll be encompassed there. And then the ones, the two sessions with our seniors will be at the Cal. All of those other sessions will be Zoom. The game plan is we will be using AI, and we will either through Zoom or in person be recording the sessions and kind of culling what the major themes that come out of it. Any questions on any of that? And again, your participation is the proverbial fly on the wall, fly in the Zoom room, just to kind of take in some of the feedback. And the ones, and I, I, I'm intentionally involving some central office administrators who, chances are, are not known, may or may not be known by the families. I, I, I kind of want the impartial piece as much as possible so people can speak very freely. I do want to be involved, however, with the Chamber of Commerce and also with the seniors at the Cal as well. I think that FaceTime is important.
Could you maybe send out like a Google?
A poll or something?
So people can sign up?
Absolutely.
Deconflict. I mean.
You could see what other people have signed up for.
Yeah, because we.
So six people aren't showing up at the Cal.
Because if we do, then we have to publish this in a meeting.
Yeah.
Only three of us can attend any specific one.
Yeah, I'll get that out first thing tomorrow morning.
So it still would have to be a meeting if we're just sitting there and listening? I mean.
As long, if you're sitting there listening, as long as you do not have a quorum of the committee. So technically, the max that you could have at any one of those sessions would be three.
We could double check with Joe, but I think that's probably the cleanest way to do it.
Yeah.
Anything else on that?
That's it.
Thank you for pulling that together. That's a lot of work and a lot, but great experience for the folks who are going to do the facilitating and for those of us who are going to do the listening.
And again, as I said in the background notes, it's a, it's a small snapshot. For each of these sessions, we're aiming for about 10 to 12 people so that you could get, you know, some diverse thought, but people will actually have the time, you know, their airtime, so to speak. I think the second piece in all business is just what was presented at the last meeting, the draft 25, 26 school calendar, based upon the request at last meeting. I think also included in this calendar are the midterm exam dates for the middle high school.
Can I just say something? On that draft calendar, it has graduation as Friday instead of Saturday.
Oh, does it?
June, yeah, and for 2026, it said Friday, June 6th or whatever, but I think it's Saturday.
Right date, wrong day.
Correct. Yeah, we'll, we'll fix that so it says Saturday, June. DJ.
Oh, yeah. It's in the calendar correctly blocked. Yeah, okay, and the narrative there.
Someone's going to show up at the High School Field, right, all by themselves.
Oh, my goodness. All right. Can I have?
We need to move that pending.
I need a motion to approve. Christine, you're there.
Absolutely. I move we accept the proposed 25, 26 calendar with the change in graduation day.
Can we have a second? Second is Bert. Any further discussion on the calendar? Kevin?
Just real quick, I, I realize they are tentative dates, but if we could maybe highlight the final dates and the midterm dates, kind of like we do everything else, just so it jumps out at the parents, you know, and if it changed, you know, if we get a snow day, so be it, and that'll adjust, but it'll just register with them a little easier. Same thing with the end of term, because they may not read all the notes.
Okay.
So can we have a vote with that additional clarification to highlight final exams?
So can I modify my motion to accept the calendar, given the highlighting of the final exams and also the change in graduation day?
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the calendar as amended?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, seven zero. Thank you very much. The colors are gorgeous and.
That is all.
It's a lot of work for one page.
She is the brains behind the operation.
Okay. Next up is, no, that's new business. I'm sorry. Other topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair. I just will admit, yep.
Just going back to the calendar real quick. I didn't notice this before. 60th School Day is November 26th. What's the significance of that?
Because at Forestale and Oak Ridge, they operate on trimesters.
Thank you, sir. Sorry. Back to you, ma'am.
So other topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair. I just have one. I'm just going to mention that last night, Dr. Joe presented the FY26 budget to the Finance Committee. It was very comprehensive. I was there. I listened. I took notes. It was a very cordial event. There were a lot of very positive comments made about the progress that the schools have made, and also just in terms of the quality, concise, data-packed budget report that was provided. And we will pick up the discussion at the meeting of the capital request.
On March 11th.
March 11th. And that's all I needed to say. Any other unreasonably anticipated events? Kevin?
I'll admit, I opted to go to a basket, go watch my, my daughter and my partner to my left's daughter play basketball last night, but thank you for attending. Otherwise, I would have been there.
All right. New business, approval draft of the 25, 26 school committee meetings calendar.
So this is the second calendar, yes. So this is kind of a rollover of what we've been typically doing over the last couple of years. So it's just kind of transposing, you know, onto a new calendar. Really, I think the only date that could be free-floating that the committee may want to revisit as we go into the springtime is that date for the retreat in the summertime, the, you know, the evening, which tentatively now is Tuesday, July 29th. But other than that, it's pretty standard as far as what we've been doing.
So as your summer plans materialize, if we need to revisit that.
We'll have a new member as well.
And we will have a new member, perhaps?
Unless somebody's not moving.
Still moving.
Oh, shucks. No, I guess we have to let her go. All right. Can I have a, do we need a vote on that? Yes, we do. Approval of the school committee meeting calendar for 25, 26.
I move that we approve the school committee meeting calendar as presented.
Second by Bert. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven zero zero, unanimous. This is a good, good story. So Sandwich Middle High School, NIAS, New England, what does that stand for?
New England Association of Schools and Colleges.
Thank you very much.
So I know you were all involved in the accreditation visit when they came. The team of eight educators came here in October. NIAS, to their credit, they've kind of streamlined their process. They're a lot more expeditious in getting the final report, which you have in your packet. Jeannie is here to kind of talk about the findings of the report and then specifically what are some of the next steps. But if you take the time to go through it, and as Jeannie will touch upon, it's overwhelmingly positive. I think the ratio was something like 23 to three commendations to recommendations. As a matter of fact, you as a committee are commended for your work and for your support of the middle high school. So I think as Sue just alluded to, there's a lot to celebrate here. So Jeannie?
Yeah, we, we are very happy with the report. So the visiting team came in October for, for three days, and we received the report in early January with a couple of questions, which we answered, and then we got the final report just after that. So, so I just created a, a short presentation to summarize. It's a 45-page document that's extremely detailed and specific to Sandwich Middle High School. However, the ratings are based on seven foundational elements. So we met all of the foundational elements except for one. So you can see what the foundational elements are. Learning culture, we met. Student learning, we did not meet. Professional practices, we met. Learning support, we met. And then learning resources, we met. So talking about student learning, specifically, the language they used to describe why we did not meet was based on our curriculum mapping. So curriculum mapping is a living document that exists for teachers to kind of identify the standards, the essential questions, all of the material that they're working with in a specific unit. And these are shared documents in the department. So if two teachers are teaching the same course, they're on the same curriculum map for a shared experience for the student. So, so what our maps, we had tremendous completion and depth in certain departments, and we didn't have it in other areas, based on lots of factors. Based on the, if it's new programming and it's just starting, for example, the map is in development. If there have been shifts in, in different teachers teaching that class as well, the map may have been left and then added to by a colleague or, or like that. So, so we are actively working, so we've, we did not meet that standard. So we have dedicated very specific professional development time on the Wednesdays for departments to, to work together to complete the maps. So we, they, they gave us high praise for specific maps that our, that our teachers had done. So we have exemplars. We know exactly what they're looking for, and we know where, where the vacancies are. We received 22 commendations, which is phenomenal, and three recommendations. So I didn't list all 22, but I just highlighted 14. But they, they're very, very specific, and the commendations came from their interactions with, with staff, with the faculty, with the students. They visited classrooms. They spoke to small groups of students. They met with community members. And so their information was very, very specific to our school and personalized. You guys got a shout out as well for strong support from the school committee. And these are a few more commendations. So high expectations for staff. They, on the flip side of the curriculum mapping, they did like our shared Google Drive folders, and those are departmental. That's shared access for resources. So the structure and infrastructure is there, and it's working. We just need to, to do the maps more completely. The revision of the master schedule was also highlighted as a commendation, use of technology. They definitely gave us praise on our focus on teaching and learning and the programmatic shifts that are happening with the pathways. They highlighted that in the, kind of the continuous improvement philosophy. The three recommendations they gave us, number one was based on safety, building safety, specifically access to the building outside of school hours and kind of that vulnerability that we've, we've always had. And, and they, they did highlight that. Number two was that students receive timely and corrective feedback, time to revise and improve their work. And so they highlighted that, which, which is a legitimate goal of ours for teaching and learning. And we did make a, a change in Power School this year contractually with the teachers, that they had 10 days to give feedback to students once something was submitted. So we are moving, we're trending in the right direction with that. And finally, to create more dynamic learning environments to support student-led learning collaboration and engagement. And that's both physical and intellectual environment. So we're working with the pathways programs and all of the different programmatic kind of applied learning work that we're doing. And so I think that will be addressed, and then the physicality of the rooms as well, to design spaces where kids can collaborate and move around and, and kind of have that support physically. So the next steps for us, we have a workshop scheduled in March already with the admin team at Sandwich Middle High School and NIASC. And then they'll walk us through the next steps. And our map is due in June. So, so we did not meet, so we are actively working. We have a deadline, so it is the academic year, and it is due back to them in June. So, so we've been, we're on our assignment, and, and we will complete that. And then we'll focus as well, district-wide as we do, on safety and then the internal timely corrective feedback to students. So those are, those were their recommendations.
Bert?
I've got two questions. Did they talk to the students?
Yes.
Okay. The other question is concerning the recommendation on, on feedback. That was addressed in the contract, which was approved prior to their visit. So why did they make, do you have any idea why they, because that was, that was addressed?
So, so they visited, they visited many, many classrooms. They spoke to lots of kids and teachers. And feedback is not necessarily just giving students back a grade. I think they, they, they're focusing on consistency with instructional practices. So for example, do I, do I allow retakes in my classroom? Maybe I do. Do you? Maybe she doesn't next door. So those inconsistencies, that's feedback related, and opportunities for kids to, to submit and, and work towards progressive improvement. And I think that's really the angle of where.
The teachers are not robots. Some, some may want to give, may allow, may allow a retest, some may not.
Right.
Are they saying they must all do the same thing?
No, I think they just want us as a school to, to have those discussions, to kind of have those conversations about, you know, more alignment, even if it's departmentally, things that make sense for the department. They, they just pose questions for us to, to self-reflect and improve for what's best for what's, what's best for kids.
I'm not so sure that was a, that recommendation was, was deserved.
Okay.
Because I think you're doing a good job on that.
I, I think to build upon what Jeannie's talking about, it's about consistency of feedback, Bert, but it's also about quality of feedback. I think we've all had the experience in our times as students where you've had a teacher, say, I'm just, as an example, an English teacher, where you've spent a great deal of time. where you've spent a great deal of time, say, on a writing assignment, and you get a lot of detailed, high-quality feedback about what you wrote. The substance, the, the grammar, the syntax, all of that. And then have you also had, on the other side of the spectrum, somebody who just puts down a numeric grade or a letter grade, and you really don't have a lot of insight why you got that? And I think maybe some of the observations spoke to inconsistencies in depth in quality of feedback.
I still think, all right. I still think you, I mean, you, it's obvious you have some very good quality teachers because the last couple of pages of the budget are focused on, on the.
Sure.
Where kids are going and how kids are, kids are getting good jobs.
Sure.
Better than many other, many other schools.
And I think the piece around continuous improvement is taking a long, hard look at where are areas that you can improve. Nothing you said do I disagree with. I, I, I'm right there agreeing with you. But it's about, as a collective whole, improving the practices. I get your piece where you're coming from, from the teacher autonomy perspective. I get it totally. But it doesn't mean as an organization, we can't improve in the consistency of the feedback that we're getting. And realize this, and I could say this very candidly. I think what they're pointing out, I've heard anecdotally many times from parents as well. So I think it's, it's, it's a thoughtful.
Teachers excel in different areas. And one, where one may not give a lot of feedback, they may be educating the kids pretty, pretty well. So enough said.
And I think this also applies to assessments. You know, some teachers might give high stakes exams and not a whole lot of formative assessment that gets to the high stakes piece. And so it's the consistency in how they approach assessments, classroom policies, those kinds of things, I would think.
Any other questions? Yep, Kevin?
Excuse me, question about the student learning one. I went to, I'll admit, I did not read all 45 pages word for word, but I did scan through it, and I'll give a deeper look later. On the, the one that we did not meet, student learning, I'm looking at page 20 of the report. And when they did the collaborative conference, did not meet. And they did, we, do not meet, do not meet. Then I'm not sure, the decennial school rating, I'm not sure if that was a self-assessment. Did, you know, but then we did not meet.
Decennial schools rating, yes. That is how the school assess itself in its self-study.
I guess I'm wondering, was there the, well, the feedback from the collaborative conference, which then you self-assessed to meet, but then they come visit, you do not meet. I was wondering about that disconnect. Did they, did they move the cheese or something? Or you just not quite get there?
So we, so there was, we had been working with Atlas, which was a platform where all the maps were held. And so the, in order to transfer those into, into Google Docs, that piece, we were actively working on the transfer. And so that piece took place during that transitional period from Atlas to Google Docs. So there was the, there was the physical transfer and then the, then the addition to the, to the, just updating. Like, curriculum maps are, are living all the time. So like, teachers could be adding things to them as they teach and links and changing and adjusting lesson plans and different things like that. The standards won't change. The unit, the target, the essential question will not change. But however, some of the, the activities may change, right? And some of the resources that are being used will change depending on what, what we're using at the time, software and things like that. So it is a living document, so it's fluid. But yes, it's, I mean, it was on the, for, I mean, for years. Curriculum mapping has been discussed and given professional development time to continuously work on them. They, they weren't forgotten, per se.
So the BAPS, what do they include? Like instructional outcomes?
They include, I can share a map with you, but the map would include the timelines, so pacing-wise. So this unit is going to take 10 academic days, 14 academic days. It's essentially, it is like a recipe for how the teacher is going to approach that unit. So it would have the standards. It would have the essential questions. It would have all of the assessments, formative and summative. It will have the activities. It will have resources. So live links. So essentially, any teacher that comes into our building would say, I'm here. I'm, I'm going to start teaching biology here. And we would say, great, here are our curriculum maps. So that it's kind, so everyone is kind of moving in the same direction with the same materials.
So how much leeway does a teacher have to create content, to, to, to teach in the way that they?
Yeah, we, 100%, like tremendous autonomy. Anyone who, anyone who's been in a classroom knows that the personality of the teacher influences the, the instruction. So, so we have the standards for sure. And we give freedom there to kind of find, with resources nowadays, things are changing so fast. And there are so many really, really cool and dynamic things coming in education all the time. So as long as they're in alignment with the standards and they're reputable and cert, verified, they're 100% allowed to exercise that freedom and autonomy.
So how does that validation happen in department meetings?
Departmentally.
And talk about these and justify and provide evidence as to why one's better than another?
Yes.
Yeah. Christine?
So reading that specific area as well, it looks like this was, we didn't meet it, but this was something that had already been identified by the district as something that you were working on and you're continuing to work on. Do you feel confident with a four months left before this final report is due, that it will be complete? Or would you feel like it will still be a work in progress?
No, I, I mean, I feel like right now, we, it's, to, to have it flagged by NEASK, 100%. So what we've got, what we've done is we've done inventory. We've, we, I asked them for the exemplars. I asked NEASK, I said, point me in the right direction. Which ones do you, did you think were, were great, solid and complete? And they, they told me. So from those then, shared with the department chairs, who went through their departments. And we've actually highlighted the mapping that is incomplete. So we have a spreadsheet, and we're essentially working on that in monitoring and supervising the completion of those maps. So we, like, very intentionally focused on the areas that are incomplete.
And doable and formidable.
Doable, doable.
Thanks.
Yep.
If you could just clarify two things. One, that the nature of NEASK is a peer review model. These are not bureaucrats, policymakers. These are real teachers, teaching in real time, who are reviewing as a peer and making their recommendations on that basis. Any comment? And then, this is a decennial, so there's 10 years till the next one, but there are incremental reportings that happen throughout the 10 years. Could you just explain that?
That's correct. So it's not done now by any means. We have a scheduled workshop with them in March. And then in June, the maps will be sent back to them. There'll be more conferencing. And then it's, it's cyclical and, and check-ins along the way of how things are going. In terms of the feedback we received in the report, the, the information they collected was 100% collaborative. So they asked for, they met with every stakeholder in the building in groups. And they, and a lot of this, like, was, this was not a surprise, right? Because we had these conversations with them and we knew. And we said, like, we, we want to improve. We are moving. We identified this. This was not a surprise. And so, thank you. In a way, like a collaborative, like you said, like their peers, they, they were not, they were educators in all facets. So you had administrators, district administrators. You had teachers of all disciplines. So it was, it was a collaborative process. And they visit lots of schools and they work in a school. So they understand the reality of, of what that daily life is like for a teacher and for, for the school and as far as like completing things in the mapping and how fluid it is.
But they are assessing on the standards, not on the way they do it back in their school?
No, they're assessing comparatively to the, to the foundational elements. Yep.
One more question. Why are there no ratings under professional practices? That line is blank. Was that not something that, that was reviewed this time around?
Is it?
On page 20?
Of, of the report?
Yeah, of the grid.
Yeah.
That says meets, doesn't, don't, does not meet. There are no ratings in that column, in that row at all. Is that just not something they looked at that's?
No, they would have looked at that. I, I'll have to look. I don't have the report right in front of me. But we can, I can certainly look at that.
There's two sections, 31A, and it says meets. And then 36, and I don't know if they changed their, how they do things. It says foundational element, it says not applicable. And then rating meets a standard. That's on page 16. So, I don't know. Maybe it's the formatting of.
In the report?
Yeah.
That's the directory report, so if it, it's not.
No description for program element 3A in the report on page 16. It says NA, so I don't know.
Any further questions? Well, all the faculty, staff, students, administrators need to be congratulated because that's an outstanding, from my perspective. And I've done accreditation visits at the college level. So that is a high standard to meet, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't have a benchmark, so I'll, I'll, I'll take Dr. Miller's evaluation of it. Thank you.
Well, by the sheer number of commendations, I think that's something that's pretty remarkable.
That's the place where you want to be.
I just don't have a reference benchmark to.
I've been on three of those committees, and none of them only had three recommendations. We had much more on all the, they're all vocational schools that I was on, but we all had many more recommendations than what you had, which is good.
And again, just for the people at home, and maybe I'm off on this, but when the visitors make their report, it goes up to the commission. The commission responds to that, and the district's responses to that report. And it is the commission that issues the final report. So this goes through a lot of levels.
Yeah, so, so as I say in the background notes, it's obviously, you know, as, as we've commented, a positive report. The commission, as Sue is referring to, will be meeting in the spring. And for all the fall schools, they take a vote individually based upon the report. And essentially, one of thing, one of three things can happen. The school is continued accreditation. It's continued accreditation, but placed on warning. And then the worst would be placed on probation. Sandwich Middle High School will not be a warning or probation school by any stretch of the imagination. I can say that with a high degree of confidence because for six years, I served on the commission. So I've had the opportunity to process a lot of reports like this. This is an extremely positive report.
Last question for the, in the four months for the non-meet. Is that just something, you submit paperwork to them, do they come back and visit? How's that?
I submit, I'll submit.
So they do it electronically?
The maps, and then, yes, I imagine it would all be done over email.
Got it. Thank you.
And could you just mention substantive change, just again? If in fact, what substantive change is? And if you, the middle high school had a substantive change, what the process would be for that?
So that would be in reference to something that was more serious? Or is that what you're?
Programmatic system.
Oh, yes.
Or changes in administration.
Yes, so we, we are required to report to NEASK if there are any very significant changes to the middle high school for what they just reviewed. So for example, any changes with courses, like cutting classes, cutting electives, really, really dramatic changes like that, that those need to be reported to NEASK because that would impact our accreditation.
Most often, it's a budgetary situation. A lot of times, communities that are dependent on, say, a Prop 2.5 override to stay afloat, it fails. So as a result, the high school's losing a considerable amount of staff. The principal would be required to file a substantive change report talking about, you know, the negative effects of what just happened.
Any further questions? Yeah, Tracy?
I'm sliding us forward. I just wanted to say thank you.
Oh, thank you.
To all the staff. And it's, it doesn't go unnoticed.
Thank you.
There's lots of positive things happening.
Thank you.
So I think we can move on from NEASK, on to program of studies, changes.
So these are proposed changes for the 2025, 2026 program of studies for Sandwich Middle High School. For all departments, general changes applicable to all would be removal of these title questions that have been in there for quite some time that the teachers found somewhat irrelevant at this point. So they, so we're, we're going to remove those title questions. For example, like in English, like what is humanity opened the, the, the course description. And so it's been there for, for many, many years. Not that it's not important, but we are going to take out the title questions. We are shifting some of the location of courses, just the, the format of where they fall. We added our pathways into the program of studies in more consistent language, just simple language, like prerequisite, required sequence, just to have that common language for all departments. So grade nine requirements, we are proposing the removal of freshman seminar, which is, has been in effect since the three schools combined and the elementaries and the wing school closed. Freshman seminar was a course created for grade nine freshmen. It, it had, well, no, freshman seminar existed before the wing closed. It is to connect ninth graders. It was when Sandwich High School was Sandwich High School, and the 3K to eights sent the ninth graders up. And they didn't know the building, and it was brand new for them. And it was a, it was a team-building mentor kind of class, connecting them with seniors. So now that our freshmen know the building, know, they participate in all sorts of clubs with, with the, the school and with classmates, athletics, we would like to open up programming for freshmen in grade nine and take away the requirement for freshman seminar. We would like to move that opportunity to grade seven and create nights in training, which essentially is the same model where we're connecting seniors, because seniors love the senior mentor class, with our incoming seventh graders to help bridge that transition. And so they do a lot of really fun, kind of introductory to high school organizational games with them. Today, they were doing a scavenger hunt around the building to find certain things so they get to know the layout. So that, that is a proposal. We also would like to, right now, all grade nine students take earth, space, and applied physics. And we'd like to have all grade nine students take biology or Principles of Biomedical Science, starting next year. So this explains the shift because freshman seminar does have a lot of validity for peer-to-peer interactions and peer mentoring. But we do think we're missing the mark with grade nine just based on the fact that the kids know they're already, they've already been in the building for two years. So some of the things they'll do will be study skills, organizational best practices, team building, peer mentoring, intro to clubs, extracurriculars, and just creating connections with the upperclassmen. The addition of the pathways, so project lead the way computer science pathway. We are, are in the process and have submitted our biomedical pathway, business pathway. And then we also have internally, and we didn't need any kind of funding for this, but we have created the fine media performing and industrial arts pathways. Just naturally, they're happening through our video programming, through our woodshop, and, and also through our art classes. So the goal really nowadays is to get kids connected to what they love and what they're passionate about, and then showing them the way there with very specific intentional coursework. This is just, this, we are, we're going to add this into the program of studies for parents and students to see very clearly. This is just, this, we are, we're going to add this into the program of studies for parents and students to see very clearly. Like, if you're interested in computer science, grade nine, this is where you would go, grade 10, these are your options, grade 12, internships down the line, once we get that up and, and working. And the same thing in the business innovation pathway, so families can see, and students can see, kind of the trajectory of where they, where they will go, and what they'll get to study if they choose these different pathways. The biomedical, the same thing, the innovative pathway. And this is our fine media performing and industrial arts. With special education, so Mr. McNamara took a long look at our program of studies and decided that it's best if we move any of our, like, applied, integrated, or unified classes that are specifically labeled as such, move them into the correct departments. So, not, we're not going to have necessarily a special education section of our program of studies. We're going to actually put all of our classes for ELA or math in that section of the correct department. And then, also, we're going to move any of the support classes to pass/fail. So, learning center, English language support, and remove encoding and decoding. So, any kind of an IEP service is not going into the program of studies. And then, new course names for the life skills, I think it was academic and civic mentoring, also recommended by, by Mr. McNamara, changing some of the names of very specific classes. Not the content, just the, just the title. So, for PE, we have had always a waiver process, however, it has never been in the program of studies. So, I think it's important to put that in, just to actually be transparent and put the verbiage in there for, the procedure for applying for a waiver.
So, if you recall, when we met with the Student Advisory Council before the last meeting, that was one of the questions that they had, and thinking about the big picture, I think for virtually all, you know, six of the kiddos that were before you, that would free up space for them for additional electives that they might be interested in.
Was there any consideration of, for example, a student who is a serious dance student, so is taking multiple dance classes, or someone who is an athlete, who doesn't necessarily play in school sports, but is in leagues, other leagues elsewhere? Could that-
Yeah, that's exactly what this is.
Okay.
So, a student, for example, because these, a lot of these pathways are very, very specific, and you start right as a ninth grader, to have that flexibility to open them up, the waiver process is perfect for that. So, if you have a dancer, you have a student who's participating in a very rigorous club sport, or a three-season athlete here at home at our school, they can, they can complete the waiver form, submit it, and, and then get approved to open that up, open the schedule up a little bit, and fulfill the PE requirement.
Is there an avenue for non-athletes to be able to meet that criteria? Through going to the gym, or participating in fitness classes, and things like that?
So, the recommendations for the waiver process, it's per, it's per school discretion. However, the recommendations are to be very, very careful about, by, to have something verified, like an MIAA sport, or to have a club sport, or something that can be verified. And so, that would be through the waiver process, it would have to, it would have to be vetted?
For discussion.
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
It's not just somebody going to the gym on their own after school, it'd have to be a bit more structured. Where is that in the program of studies? I was looking, I couldn't find it, maybe I just missed it. The waiver.
The waiver language?
Yeah.
So, we, it has, it's not in the current, it is, it's not in the current, we're adding it to the program of studies?
Yeah, I was-
Are you in the draft?
Right, I just didn't see it in the draft. I might have just missed it.
While you're looking.
We should have the Jeopardy theme song going.
Home Economics is gone.
What?
Jeopardy theme song right now.
Yeah.
Haskindor taught that course, and she went over to the intermediate school in Barnstable, and I saw her over there. I'm sure she's going to find that too.
Looked under PE and I didn't see it.
Okay.
So, you will add that then, to the final copy?
Yes.
Maybe it was there.
That's what I'm trying to do, I don't have a pen. I don't, because we don't have edit.
I think- It is, it is in the notes, the program notes, that Dr. Maruszek shared on the short, one-pageer summary-
Right.
Under PE, health and wellness.
So, it will go in the program of-
Yes, yep.
Any other questions?
One brief one. On the sped, why is it, why did you change, change it to pass/fail?
So, the academic support or learning centers, those are supports that are put in place on an IEP. And so, those students are receiving support for all of their classes. So, so the goal is to collaborate and work with them, and not necessarily, they're not getting graded on that. They're learning skills, they're developing skills.
They are currently graded, is that it? No?
In the middle school, they are not, in the high school, yes, they were, they were receiving a grade.
So, now it's all pass/fail?
For, for those learning centers, yes. It will be next year, if, if approved.
You're constantly working on goals with your IEP, working towards progress towards your goals, so it's kind of hard to decipher a grade, per se.
So, does pass/fail enter GPA?
It does not, I don't think so. But the, if it's a, I think that because the learning centers are level four, they will not enter, they won't enter on the GPA with pass/fail. That's one of the proposals.
Even when they were rated, they didn't enter the GPA?
For the academic support, no.
Okay.
Christine, and then Kevin?
I was just going to comment, I think that's a smart move with a keeping freshman seminar-type class and the senior mentor piece together. I think that was a great experience for both my kids on either end of it. And moving it to seventh grade makes a whole lot of sense. Also, will open up opportunities for additional credits for freshmen, which I think is, you know, I think a lot of, we have a lot of motivated students who want to be able to take that extra elective or add in another course, so I think that's great, so, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
She stole my thunder on that, I think, I liked that idea when they, I think, I'm not sure whose original idea it was, but thank them for me, because I think it's kind of brilliant. The earth science class, that's going to be shifted to biology instead? Did I call it the right, called the right title?
Yes.
Maybe my memory's clouded. Didn't we change that a couple of years ago, where this earth science was required? And now we're-
Yup. Before my time.
Expound.
So, let, let Dr. Joe, chemistry teacher extraordinaire, answer that question. I think there, there's a couple pieces here. Moving biology to ninth grade gets us in much better alignment with the overwhelming majority of high schools across the Commonwealth. As a matter of fact, it was very, very common that, you know, with MCAS, instead of really nailing kids, you know, haring them with three tests in grade 10, at least you're kind of separating it out. But if you think about the classic sequence of science courses, biology, chemistry, and physics, this will, I, I think for, of a school our size and caliber of students we have, we should have many more kids accessing physics. This will enable that, but it'll also have, for the senior year, more of those really good AP opportunities vis-à-vis AP Chem, AP Physics, AP Biology, AP Environmental Science that students can access. I also like the idea of the caveat of giving our freshmen the opportunity of biology or the project lead the way biomedical sciences. I think we want a lot of kids in that biomedical science pathway. Duh, that's where there's a ton of jobs, particularly here on the Cape. So, I think it makes a lot of sense. I don't say in any way, shape, or form to diminish earth and space science, but I think looking at that classic science progression and academic rigor, we need to go back to the future and have biology in that ninth-grade position.
I support it, I would just want to, I thought it was worthy, if anybody listening at home, anybody watches this, they hear the why.
Yeah, and, and I feel, you know, I completely support Genie and the high school making this decision, but 90% of my response is as a former science teacher, and knowing what works and what works well with kids.
Well, I like it. I also, I think the idea of allowing kids to validate out of gym so they can take that other class in an area they may want to explore is providing those additional options for our kids, and I think that's a very smart choice. I would like to see, I know it's listed to voted tonight. Personally, I would like to see the actual wording that's going to go in, that's going to go in the program studies before we vote. But that's, you know, I agree in principle, but I would just like to actually see the wording in it. So, I don't know, defer to the chair, you know, do it on a future meeting. But that's just a personal view.
We're not pressed for time, we can wait till the next meeting, or to whenever you get the final draft of this.
The wording for the PE waiver?
For this, or program of studies with the changes.
For the changes.
So, all the changes are there, so-
Oh, sure.
We vote the document, it's actually what we've read, that's all.
Oh, I can have, I can have that tomorrow then, if this, if, if-
And we could do it very quickly, do it at the next meeting.
Next meeting.
Okay.
Time for next meeting, give yourself a break.
Yeah, we're not having another meeting. I did, it just processed for me, I like to see what we're actually, the actual verbiage. The only other thing I did note in doing this review, and I know we're going to talk about this at a future meeting, you know, we talked, we voted a couple meetings back to change the graduation requirements. The graduation requirements and, like, the discussion about GPA and class rank is in both the program of studies and the student handbook, and the wording is just a little bit different. It's essentially the same, but it's not, you know-
Yeah.
I don't know, does it have to be in both? Do we want it in both?
Technically, I, I think probably the more important document for it to be in is in the program of studies. And, and the verbiage change that we had was around that CD or competency determination in lieu of MCAS not counting anymore. I, if I would have my druthers, my recommendation would be, we have the change in the program of studies, and lord knows, your student family handbook is probably long enough, as it is, that you could probably delete it out of both, you know? Or just make sure that they're consistent when, when the student handbook comes before you, it usually comes before you late April, early May, just making sure that they have completely the same verbiage, but either or.
And I don't think we'll see anything from DESI and that commission on graduation requirements.
I think they're kind of slow-rolling it.
Before the end of this academic year, so.
I'll, personally, I'd defer to whatever your preference is. I most always worry about version control.
Sure.
It's much easier to update one document than have to do two.
Yeah.
That's all I had.
All right, so we will hold off on the vote until the next meeting.
Just a question about the PE waiver, and what the language will be around it, in case. I know it was brought up when we had the Student Advisory Committee, that if someone's really involved in soul and theater, but they also work out at the gym, and they also want to be able to take an elective class that's going to help them in their future. Just to make sure how that, what that waiver process will look like, so that it will be clear-
Sure.
If there's another path besides a sport. Or if there's not, then a conversation about what that might look like, because that was brought up by a few students.
Right, the, I mean, the Department of Ed mandates the PE requirement for all four years in some capacity. They don't dictate how much PE, but schools can, schools do have to have students take it for four years in some way, shape, or form. So, so the waiver has always existed at Sandwich Middle High School, it's just never been out there, public. So, so it's a document, what I can do in preparation with the, sending you the final draft, I'll share what the waiver looks like. It's pretty much open-ended, I think, to, to give schools the discretion to look at each student on a case-by-case basis, as far as like where, given that they're not all, they're not all doing the same sport, or the same club, or the same activity. So, so it is nicely designed in a way that gives, that gives us a little bit of flexibility with looking at each case individually. But I'll include that waiver as well, so you can read it.
Very good.
Thank you.
We, so we can address, discuss further when we see the final draft.
Just as she sneaks away, thank you, Ms. Nelson. I think some of these are actually very good changes. I mean, one, we're going to look like heroes to the school committee advisory council, because some of these changes happen pretty fast, but I think it's the right thing. And I'm really, I'm very interested, you know, if this board approves. Next year, I'm going to want to hear how nights in training is going. I think that's really intriguing, to connect the senior to a seventh grader. I think it's actually more powerful than a ninth grader. So, I, again, applaud whoever came up with that idea.
Get them while they're young. That's great.
That's not a bad, well-
That's great. Okay, other topics not unreasonably designed, anticipated by the chair, I have none. Under new business, anyone else? Moving to subcommittee reports, Tracy, DEIB subcommittee.
I keep sliding away with this table. At some point, I'm going to push it way out in the middle. So, the committee met tonight before this meeting, and Dr. Quinn filled us in on all the awesome professional development that continues to happen and around culturally responsive teaching practices. And we had a great conversation about, especially two words, awareness and steadfast. And that, just awareness of all of our unique learners, what their needs are, how to meet their needs, is something that we do, and we will continue to do, regardless of what is happening around us with language and the climate that we're living in. And the desire for all of our students to, and staff, everyone, to have that sense of belonging. There's lots of great professional development continuing with facing history and ourselves, continuity between all of the buildings, so it's not like different developmental levels or getting training in different ways, but more of embedding just how we teach, and how students can bring their experiences into the classroom and be valued. So, there was also great news about the hating crimes grant that we were awarded again. And that money will go to, again, more professional development and a community event looking at a couple of different films through an organization called Upstanders. There's two films that are being looked at, Dawnland and Coexist. I didn't write that one down, but I think I got that right. That are being discussed as a community event, which will be another exciting thing happening. What else do we talk about? Lots happening at Forestdale with kindness rocks, and kindness day, and cards.
Lots happening at Forestdale with kindness rocks and kindness day and cards. There's also collaboration in having a Wampanoag Garden and other after-school kind of activities and things being planned there, which is exciting. And yeah, that's, that's what we talked about. We're going to meet again in about six weeks to keep conversation going and see where we are at. If I missed anything, fellow members, I think that's it.
Liaison Advisory Committee reports. Danielle?
I just, just an announcement for the CPAC. The next general meeting is going to be Tuesday, February 25th at 6:30, and it's going to be virtual. So check your emails in the next few weeks from BJ McNamara about that. And then upcoming in March, there'll be just an informal breakfast coffee at, probably at Cafe Chu. So that's looking forward to March.
The safety committee is actually meeting tomorrow. I'm hoping to adjust my schedule so I can make it. I'll report out on the progress at our next meeting. And from the school committee student advisory council, we talked at the last meeting about meeting, meeting them where they are. You know, at the high school, my thought is maybe an off Wednesday, and I hate to give you all one more meeting, but the logistics of meeting them and then rushing down here might be a little too much. So I will work through the soup and reach out to the students to see what date might work in March, and get that out to you and see if we can find something where that would work for folks.
There's going to be parent-teacher conferences in March. There's one, the 19th, at night. So we have a meeting, I think, is there a meeting the 5th? The 5th and then, no, the 12th we're meeting. So 12th and the 26th, so the, either the 5th might be, yeah, okay.
All right.
I have a wellness update.
Wellness?
Yes, that is today as well. So lots of excitement around the wellness fair. Nicola and the whole committee has done so much work. This is going to be amazing. So for anyone listening, March 13th from 4 to 7 at the Sandwich Middle High School is where the event will be held. I mean, the flyer, the outreach is incredible. The amount of activities from, you know, active body movement, sports kind of stuff, mindfulness, I mean, there's going to be so much. Lots of swag, there's a raffle, there's fun things, there's food. It's going to be great. So don't miss it, is my message on this one.
Do we have any idea how many sponsors we have so far? Every time you turn around, there's a new sponsor.
I want to say it's at least in the ballpark of a couple dozen.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. It could be close to thirty.
That's wonderful, remembering from.
It's going to be great. I mean, I think it's, there's at least thirty.
Yeah. What do you, what do you got there, at least about thirty-ish?
Yeah, that's great. It's great. There's been a huge outpouring and.
Awesome.
It's going to be a lot of fun.
Next up is warrants. Can I have a motion to approve the warrants?
I move that we approve the warrants as presented and assigned by a majority of the school committee.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven zero zero, pass unanimously. Next is public forum, second public forum. Does anybody wish to be heard? I don't see anybody wishing to be heard, so I will close the public forum. Future agenda items. We do have a future agenda item to follow up on the Student Advisory Council activities.
It would be great at some point to hear a little bit more about some of the different teaching models that I think have happened, like with the coaches at Oak Ridge and the co-teaching. That would be great to get just how that's going and what that looks like.
And I think it came up at the table, the whole issue of GPA calculation. And I know Genie and the staff are kind of looking at a few different models, which I shared with the committee. So I don't know if the meeting of the 26th, but in a very near-future meeting, I think we can do a little bit of a deeper dive with that and kind of, you know, get a little granular and, and study what some implications are. Because there's definitely some policy implications that would go hand-in-hand with a new GPA calculation table.
Acknowledgements and closing remarks. Danielle?
I just wanted to give a quick acknowledgement to our Sandwich Middle High School math counts team, earning an impressive third-place win in the regional math counts competition. So I wanted to recognize London Eldridge, Owen Kravitz, Eli Rotandi, and eighth-grade students Damian Penev and Paxton Staley. They made history by qualifying for the state championship for the second time ever. So, and to retired teacher, Ms. Carl, Kate Carl, for coming back and, and coaching these kids. So I wanted to wish them luck at the States on March 1st.
And I would just like to thank the enterprise for highlighting the academic and scholarly activities of our students. Not quite equal time, but certainly significant press as compared to sports, which are important.
I have one more, one more, too. I just wanted to also recognize the Sandwich Girls varsity basketball team. They're going to collaborate this weekend, Saturday, with the Sandwich Recreation Sandwich Sailors Basketball Team. They're going to have a unified basketball game at the Center for Active Living. I think it's at 10:00 AM this Saturday. So it's wonderful that these kids are coming out on the weekends and giving back, so.
Anything else?
Just real quick, going on right now is the 175th game of 175-game schedule of sandwich basketball. The season started 100 days ago. I just want to say thank you to the schools for the great support, gym access. It's been a long season, but 30% of the elementary school of, or Forestdale and Oak Ridge were in the gyms every weekend all winter long, playing with their friends. So thank you.
And from a health perspective, that's so much better than sitting on a couch doing this. So that's great.
And, well, because Ms. Benetta asked, that, that ends the regular rec season, the in-town league. The travel teams still play. The last weekend of February, so 27th, 28th, February 1, 2, March, is the 40th Annual Marsh Madness Tournament, which is all the travel teams. And there'll be teams as far away from Springfield and beyond that will be down here, which great opportunity for the kids to play, also a fundraiser for the program.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn to our next scheduled meeting, February 26th, 2025, 6:00 PM, right here in Town Hall.
Second by birth. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, seven zero zero. Good night, everyone. Thank you. What did Edward R. Morrow say? Edward R. Morrow said good night and good luck.